Let's go.
Okay, with that discussion, council members, the first item on the workshop agenda today is a response to questions. There was only one question that was for us today, and that had to do with the presentation that we made on the ADA agreements. The question that we got was, is it possible for the City of Des Moines to work with other cities in putting forth an appeal to the Department of Justice? And I think Jeff is actually, I think, and his staff have researched this more than I have, but apparently the short answer is that you've looked into that. There are a number of other settlement agreements around the country. I guess the number is 300 right now. Our best judgment is that there's really not an ability to work with those other cities in putting together an appeal. We will monitor that, of course, and if there are opportunities that arise during the process to work with others, we will certainly do that. So Jeff, anything you want to?
Anything.
Okay. That was the only question, and if you're ready, we can launch right into the budget update and discussion. Alan McKinley is going to walk us through that.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Alan McKinley, Deputy City Manager. We mentioned at our last workshop that the next workshop would start to begin a little bit closer look at our capital improvements program and budget and the recommendation that will be coming to you later this month in the form of a 200 or 300-page document. But we wanted to be able to provide you an overview of what that document, how it's being prepared. As a reminder, the Finance Department is the lead in working through this process with Scott Sanders and Dan Ritter, and then in particular, the lead is Kurt Reckel here in the front row in the white shirt. He does the yeoman's work in working with departments and putting together this recommended program. I wanted to walk you through the presentation that has some summaries and tables for you. Again, this is related to the tax-supported part of the capital improvements program. It's not the best term, most accurate term, but it's the closest that we can get. The point of it is that we're talking about the projects that are funded with a local funding share that's general obligation debt. There'll be another one for the enterprise funds that they have their own capital improvements program, but these are the ones that are supported primarily from general obligation debt, whether it's tax increments supported or debt levy supported, as well as some gaming revenue and the associated grants that support those general obligation bonds. Not going to go through all of this for you, but these are the guiding principles. I think you have seen them before. We've met with council a few years back and have gone through those guiding principles. They're not in any particular order at the top. Adherence to our TIF policy, and then the debt management related to the debt limit policy, and then as always a concern about the debt service rate because it does impact the overall city tax rate. This is an overview for you. At the top is a description of some of the major changes in the areas in bonding. The left-hand column under the adopted is what our current geo-bonding shows in the capital improvements program. The middle column is the recommended, and then you'll see the difference over on the right. We do have an increase in 2015 of $5.6 million, a substantial number, but really this year, our effort was to try to develop a recommended budget that seems to have a kind of a stabilized or level bonding need or bonding effort. And so you'll see in the adopted, we had a significant drop in 2015. We've tried to levelize that out over the six-year program, ranging from $23.5 to $26 million. We could, I'm sure departments could put together a list of needs that would far exceed that, but tension as we do, as we have in the operating budget as well, but we felt that the $23.5 to $26 million range was doable, and you'll see a subsequent chart here and a few slides that would show that as it relates to the tax rate. This is over the six-year program, the allocation of bonds, and I don't think it's too surprising that there's almost $69 million allocated to streets, $28 million to parks. You'll see the miscellaneous, and there was a question about this, I think at the last presentation, $17.6 million to miscellaneous. $12 million of that alone is for NFC, NDC, and we will be coming back to the council with your agreement on a million dollars a year for each of them on new agreements for those in the coming month. And we will touch base on that category and what makes up the difference. This is a rather busy chart. We're not going to go through it in detail, but it shows you the major categories at the top and what's the recommended geo-bonding levels that we talked about just a moment ago. The middle third section is what is in the current adopted program, and then the bottom is the difference between the two. So you can see where the changes are happening by major category. And then the last column is total change, so don't try to subtract the top from the bottom on that one since the current adopted CIP doesn't have a 2018 fiscal year built into it, but that is a total change going across.
Alan, can we get a listing of what's actually being eliminated in the miscellaneous because that's the biggest one, the 1.1? I know on the--
Absolutely, and we'll be touching base on that, and we'll give you a list on that. We talked previously just about the bonding levels in the $23.5 to $26 million range. This is a history back to 2004 of our debt service tax rate. If you could just draw a vertical line, if you will, imaginary right above the FY '12, that's where we are today at $3.92. We talked a month or two ago about the rate going up in the debt service levy. You'll see it rising there to $4.22, about a 30 cent increase. But the important thing is to see in FY '14 and moving out to FY '17, the tax rate stabilizing at $4.10, actually dropping $4.06 in FY '15. But that's all predicated upon the bonding levels that we just presented to you a few slides back. Similar to our debt levy geo-bonding, we also issue bonds that are funded from tax increment-supported revenues. You'll see a couple of large numbers in the difference column again. Need to explain those to you, and you'll see some greater detail in that. You'll see an increase of $5.8 million in FY '13 and $7.1, so $13 million. Really, we had $15 million allocated for the Municipal Service Center to be issued in FY '12, so in June, last June. Instead, we only issued $3 million based on our need for the next 12 months. So rather than issuing the other $12 million, we just pushed them into FY '13 and FY '14 based on what our actual need is. So that's not a real increase if you were to compare FY '12 through FY ' '14. It's just a shifting of when, a timing of when those bonds would be issued. The 14-4 drop in FY '17 is simply the elimination of the East Side parking garage from the Similar to the other chart, table like this, this is the TIF-backed bonds. So again, you'll see in the bottom, the change from the current adopted, the third line down, the Municipal Service Center, you'll see that there's an increase there of $11,750, and that's simply because the bonds were not issued last year as originally planned. This gives you a breakdown, again, of the funding sources for our recommended CIP. It should be coming out to you shortly, but 51.1% over that six-year period is funded with geo-bonds, supported with the debt levy, 11.5% TIF-backed bonds, and then you'll see the 9.5% in gaming revenue. So really, 27.3% is funded from state and federal grants. That's probably significantly less on a percentage basis than maybe what you've seen in prior CIPs, but prior CIPs would have included the airport program, which many of their projects are 75 to 90% funded from federal grants. Those won't be reflected in our capital improvements program anymore. Allocation by category, 55, it's no surprise, again, 55% allocated to our street program, 9% to bridges. We wanted to provide you, we did this last year, we provided you some narrative explanations of the highlights, if you will, from each of the categories. I'm not going to go through every one of these, but I wanted to just touch on a few of them. In particular, just to remind you that there is $2 million a year program of gaming revenues for the bridge projects. We are reflecting the 2011 Citywide Bridge Evaluation Report. The projects that we have in here reflect those needs. The third bullet in particular, there's $1 million that's been incorporated into the CIP and the bridges related to the Red Bridge out here south of City Hall. There'll be further discussion in the next presentation to follow related to that. And then you'll see the major plan work for 2013 at the bottom. Two particular projects, Grand Avenue over Walnut Creek and the Sixth Avenue toward Des Moines River. As you know, in the fire CIP, there are two particular projects that are not ongoing in nature but have appeared and will disappear in the next year or two. That's the maintenance and logistics and training facility. The projects won't disappear, just the construction of them. The central fire station is also progressing along. We have the ongoing equipment acquisition program that replaces fire trucks and ambulances EMS equipment. And then ongoing costs related to fire station remodeling is also included at a much smaller amount than obviously the millions of dollars that are being talked about up above. This is a list of the fire CIP equipment in that one project. You can see the timing and what equipment is being purchased, and all of this is included in your hard copy We're finishing up work on the Franklin Avenue Library. It's coming in under budget. We have also included, as listed in the southeast branch section, allocation for a citywide update of needs analysis related to libraries. You'll see a similar type of comment being made as it relates to the aquatic facilities, and in particular, for the southeast area, but also to look at that citywide. The miscellaneous, we talked about the third bullet down. We talked about the $12 million. It's allocated over the six-year program for NFC and NDC. Also included in the miscellaneous section is the public art, the tree replacement fund, which is based on actual construction costs being incurred. There's an allocation that comes out of a project that funds the citywide replacement fund. And then the Enterprise Resource Planning project that you awarded RFP, the winning RFP to Tyler on that, and the project is moving forward with contract Municipal building, at the top, you'll see again the Municipal Service Center, and we've spoken a couple of times about the timing of the issuance of the bonds. That's described up at the top. We're looking now at finishing or commencing Phase One design work at somewhere around $20 million. That includes the interim facilities, location for Public Works. The last sentence is of importance. Phase Two is a $60 million project. That's not been reflected in the CIP. Staff is currently working on identifying the funding sources, the possible funding sources for a project of that size and nature a little further out in the CIP. But since we have not been able to do that presently, we've not reflected in the CIP, but it's certainly on our radar, and we're working on it. ADA modifications, we've had quite a bit of discussion about that. We've tried to list out the major dollars being spent there, allocated to the various facilities across the city. It's expansive. It's a lot of money. And depending on our success in what we can get done with sidewalks, we may have to incur even additional costs. The final bullet is, we are moving forward. We anticipate by the end of this fiscal year of having city clerks' offices relocated to the first floor, which is part of our overall reorganization plan that was adopted by council a year or so ago. And then in addition to that, maybe not by the end of the fiscal year, but we are also pursuing security improvements for City Hall and the Armory. We've added $1 million for the police station improvements, Phase Two project. That's related to their identification processing and evidence storage facility. There's a great need there, and the demands are quite high for the police department. And so we've programmed $1 million for that improvement. Actually, they've already started initial $400,000 allocation in their existing CIP to do some initial work. That contract has already been awarded by council. We've also included about $3 million over the six-year program to address a variety of municipal building needs related to roof replacement, tuck pointing, exterior cleaning, flood mitigation improvements, lighting upgrades in a variety of the buildings that are listed there. We've tried to schedule that out over a six-year period so that we don't have a huge hit in one particular year. We're finishing up the energy conservation project with window replacements here in City Hall over the last several months and in the Armory. It's part of a $2 million project with almost $1.5 million in stimulus grant funding from the Department of Energy. We anticipate that to be completed yet this fiscal year as In the parks area, you'll find in the document that there's been some reallocation of dollars within projects, two existing ones that were called park redevelopment and neighborhood park improvements. We've really broken those down into three other, three different areas, three different descriptions, park improvements, sports complexes, and then the road sidewalk and utility improvements. And we think that's a better description and provides a little bit better information to you and to the general public on what those dollars are being used for as opposed to a more general description of simply park redevelopment and neighborhood park improvements. We continue to allocate dollars for recreation trail improvements, and in particular, the Ewing Park, Des Moines River, Easter Lake, Spine Trail, and the John Pat Dorian Trail as well. And then there's also dollars included in there for ongoing repairs and miscellaneous improvements as they arise. In addition, we have funds allocated for Principal Park. $500,000 has been added related to the renovation of the locker rooms. The I-Cubs have agreed to participate in the planning and design costs for that project. There are significant ADA issues there as well that funds have been allocated for, also some structural repairs to the facility that was built in 1992 and '93, so it's now 20 years old. I'm sure that we will also be pursuing the possibility of any suburban support as well. They did provide some support in the original construction of the facility. Similar to the library, overall study, we're doing the same for the swimming pools and the aquatic center. About $23,000 allocated for not only the citywide, but also the south side in particular, coordinated with the southeast library study.
Alan, before you go on, on the Principal Park, one, the half million that's shown for the locker room project is an estimate at this point. There is some work, I think, about to be underway that would try to refine those costs a little bit. If the costs go beyond that, our intention would be to reallocate dollars within the Principal Park allocation to pay for that. So we don't want to put more money into the Principal Park project, but that locker room project may end up costing more than the half million. We'll know more as that study, that's an architectural study, is completed.
We want to touch base on highlights for the street projects. We have the bicycle trails, master plan implementation. That will be a new sheet that will show up, and it lists there the first proposed projects, four-lane to three-lane conversion for Hubble, 18th to 33rd, and then a downtown bicycle facilities project. We are also in a program to replace our traffic signal LED program. And then the third bullet down is a new project related to the traffic sign inventory. It is a requirement of the 2009, you'll see there, the 2009 federal manual on uniform traffic control devices that we need to do an inventory and then to manage and maintain our traffic signing up to those standards. We've also included East 30th Intersection Improvements Project. $300,000 has been added there. There is some additional information that's listed there. Last year, actually last spring, there's reductions in community development block grant funding. In order to balance the budget, there was nearly $300,000 of the NERP program that was eliminated out of CDVG. Last June or May, the council allocated an additional, actually it wasn't built into the CIP program at the time, but approved a replacement of that, at least for the current calendar year, out of geo-bonds. We've incorporated $200,000 at least into FY '13 and '14, nothing beyond that. It's a $1.3 million total plan, so it used to be $300,000 funded with CDVG and $1 million of geo-bonds. We will be at probably the $1.3 million range for the next, for the next two or three years, and then that $200,000 would be dropping off. We'll look to see if we can try to fully restore that into the program in future years.
Can I just comment on that one? The NERP program has been extremely successful in terms of rebuilding neighborhoods, and the loss of the block grant dollars that we incurred last year was very regrettable, not a darn thing we can do about it because it was a result of federal action. So your decision a few months ago to reinstate some of those funds and this recommendation here all reflect, I think, our, as staff at any rate, our view that this is a very important program, and this is our attempt in a very, very tight budget to continue funding as much of this as we can. As Alan pointed out, the funding here is for a couple more years. My intention would be that we continue to look at it. If there's a way we can extend it beyond those two years and maintain the funding level, we will. But we thought it was important to bring this to your attention and to fund it as much as we possibly can. Again, it's been a really important ingredient in the neighborhood improvement program, and we would recommend to you that we do what we can within our limited confines of money to continue that effort, so.
On the sidewalk, ADA compliance, again, quite a bit of discussion related to that, and even answering the question this morning about trying to coordinate with other cities and finding each city, rather, each of their consent decrees to be rather unique, and makes it very difficult to try to coordinate. We are, the legal department is pursuing, trying to get an extension of time at least so that we don't have to load up our capital improvements program quite so much with geo-bonding in order to complete within the March 2018 deadline. But we do have to go back and make ADA compliance improvements to intersections that were built prior to the consent decree, and then moving forward, we have to also incorporate into what was our normal street rehabilitation projects, a portion now, excuse me, for ADA compliance related to sidewalk approaches at each of the intersections.
Could I just highlight a couple of things here? I think you all know that our application for the Tiger Grant Funds was not successful. That was our second application. We learned that just about a month ago. There is, as it turns out, another round of Tiger Grant Funding that we will submit once again, an application for funding for Southeast Connector. There are sufficient dollars, as Alan has just pointed out, to extend the street, I think jab over to Southeast 23rd Street, which gets us past Kimmon going to the east. That's a very good thing. It won't be a four-lane facility at that point. It would be a two-lane project, but at least it gets the project going to Southeast 23rd. That's an extraordinary accomplishment, courtesy to a large extent of the $12.7 million that we got from Iowa Department of Transportation for a RISE grant, but we certainly have a long way to go. We don't have all the resources within city coffers to fund this project, so we are going to need help. to need help from the federal government, and we'll continue to, to work with our friends at the federal level to see if that Tiger grant can be funded. The mayor, by the way, has been extremely helpful in opening doors there, and hopefully his efforts and everybody's efforts can get to some success down the road on that very important project.
I think the last sentence of the last bullet is important for you to, to realize as well that, you know, although a two-lane facility may have to initially be built, that staff is including right of way and grading for the full four-lane facility should the Tiger grant or some other additional funding is received beyond the initial construction of the two, two-lane facility. We have a lot of projects in the street section that we call, you know, the annual ongoing projects. They're not a specific location in and of itself. We tried to provide you here a, an overview of those projects. They range in annual funding from about 8.5 to nearly $10 million, but we've provided the breakdown there of some five, nine, 14 different projects, either streets, sidewalks, or traffic signalization, traffic control, traffic sign type projects. So a pretty large portion of our capital improvements GEO bonding goes towards these types of efforts. Just as a reminder to you, in another week or two, we plan to have the capital improvements program document out to you. It looks something like that document, so it's, again, several hundred pages. Each project has a separate page listed in it. There is volumes of information related to each project, a map or a picture of it, where it's physically located in the city, what all the funding sources are, besides just whether it's GEO or an enterprise fund, if there's grant funds that are involved, gaming revenue, or any other funding source.
Alan, where are the landscape projects that we have currently in the system, whether it's the Highland Park, or Drake, or Beaverdale, or Ingersoll?
We have a project, a separate project sheet that will show up there that's called the Streetscapes Projects. We used to try to separate them all out, but timing of when they're actually going to occur became so questionable that it was easier just to put it into a Streetscape project, allocate dollars there, and whichever Streetscape project can be programmed first, we would allocate the dollars to that. So there is a separate sheet, and it will provide a narrative and a description of what particular projects are being considered within the Streetscape.
So when, when do we get that, then?
When do we think we'll have the document?
The documents?
Two weeks.
But we can, if, I think we have the numbers, Chris, and we'd be happy to give you an early report as to how those numbers look and what the allocations, the words that go with it.
And the other piece of that would be on DART, in the presentation that we had on DART. Has there been any additional review or research as to capital improvement projects that might qualify for the match?
We are, two parts to that answer. First, there are no funds allocated in the recommended budget for that, for that project simply because we don't know what the numbers are, and we don't really have good sources of funding for it. But that said, we are looking at different ways to fund it. Your suggestion about whether or not other city projects like storm sewer improvements might be counted as a match, we're looking at that and working with the DART folks. We're looking at other four sources of funding, like perhaps Park and Ride is a way to fund it. Those are being examined. So we are, we are working hard to see if there's a way we could come up with a match, but I want to be clear, right now, there's not funds allocated in the proposed budget simply because we don't think we've got the resources to do that. But at the same time, we are looking at some creative ways that we could perhaps meet that matching requirement. I would also say about that project, and this will be a point of probably some contention, is that it's, it's my view that some of those cost estimates included an awful lot of work that was really not necessary in order for the, the bus rapid transit component to be put in, and, and I'm going to encourage people to look at trying to get at least the basic project done and maybe holding off some of those other costs in order to keep the total cost down, so that we can get going with it. Because the, the estimate that was put forth to me was, was really quite extraordinary in terms of the total.
So you and who else from city staff are working with DART on that?
This, this would be me and Alan and the finance staff primarily, and then engineering is also looking at the other projects that might be used as local match on it.
So will that be coming back to the DART board, then, in the near future?
Well, I think, I think probably what we'll do is continue to work on it. I think before going to DART with anything, two, two things will happen. DART will be coming back in front of you to give you a more detailed explanation of that project. They've talked about it generally, but, but you haven't had the full project description. That should happen here at a workshop, and then sometime after that, we'll come back to you first, I think, before we go to DART with any, any money proposals.
Okay.
And I, I understand there is a sense of urgency with that. I think they're trying to submit their application in March or April.
Correct, yeah.
But this is, this is, there's a fairly significant matching requirement with it, and I just, I want to be a little bit, I want to put a little bit of caution into this because it's not easy to come up with the four or five million, or whatever it was, in local match dollars. So we're going to work on it, but I don't want people to think this is a slam dunk thing to do.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you, Alan.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, our, our next presentation is on flood, flood study update. I'll just say, as Jeb and Bill are coming forward to make this presentation, we've talked about this in bits and pieces in the last several months, and I just tell you from my perspective, there is, there is probably not a more important project in front of us right now in terms of its sense of urgency and its long-term impact on the city. The need to improve our flood protection systems, I think, is extremely important, and it's going to require a very heavy lift on the part of, of the city of Des Moines if this, if this is going to happen in a reasonably tight timeframe that is really mandated by the facts of the situation. So I wish we weren't here talking about it, but I, I must say, I think it is extraordinarily important that we pursue this project and make the improvements that are, that are going to be outlined here in just a moment by Jeb and Bill. So with that, Jeb.
Morning, Mayor, members of council. Wanted to take some time this morning to outline the results of a study that we've recently done as a result of the information that was received earlier, or last year, from the Corps of Engineers. And this is really in preparation for an upcoming workshop, and there'll be discussions about the Storm CIP. Just a little bit review, as we all know, Des Moines is the confluence of the Raccoon and Des Moines Rivers. What's different about the two rivers is Des Moines is called, the term is a regulated river. That maybe is more optimistic than the term would, would imply, but it does have a reservoir on it, Sailorville and Red Rock, and it's all part of the Mississippi River flood control operations, whereas the Raccoon River does not have any flood control on it. And as such, any analysis of flooding in Des Moines is complicated by the fact that one river is regulated and the other is not. And so it's very important, as we go through the numbers and the studies, the things that the Corps did, is we want to make sure that those numbers are as accurate as possible. Again, just a review, since Des Moines is subject to riverine flooding, over the years, decades, Des Moines has put a fairly extensive system of works in place to protect property from riverine flooding. The system involves levees and pump stations. The levees are designed to protect the river from inundating, the property from river flooding, and the pump stations are necessary to take the storm water, or the rainwater that falls behind the levees and pump it into the river. So they, they complement each other. Just a reminder that our, our flood protection system is really more than just infrastructure. It's also the personnel, equipment, the organization, the management, to make these things work properly, and, and the ongoing upkeep and future planning to make sure that the facilities that we do have in place are adequate to prevent flooding from a probable storm in the future. And again, I, I think we all realize it, but our flood protection works are not perfect. They cannot protect against everything, but what is important is that we have a system that is reasonable, that protects against what we think is a probable storm, and that does change. And so it's necessary for us to continue to look at the environment, what Mother Nature throws at us, and to make necessary improvements in accordance with that. Again, this is a little bit of review of what was presented earlier this year, but, or last year, but in January 2011, the U.S. Corps of Engineers, they came out with a study, and again, it's the Des Moines River regulated because they're looking on the Des Moines section, and they, they analyzed flooding in the recent past and said that the predictions in the future of what they would consider a probable storm is going to be greater. This has happened in the past, just if you look in 75, 1975, our 100-year flood rate was 59,000 CFS. That was updated in 2002, went to 87,000, and most all of the things that we had been designing and implementing were based on that 2002 prediction, while in 2011, they come out with 107,000. So somewhat of a moving target, which does make it difficult for us to properly plan and construct infrastructure, but we do need to make adjustments as these numbers come out. And it's kind of a side point, FEMA is also in the process of revising and updating the regulatory portion of flood control, and those go hand in hand together, and we want to make sure that, first of all, that our citizens are protected against probable flood, but also that we meet the regulatory standards so that that's compatible with the future development. I won't really spend much time on this slide, but I think what's important is if, we do need to take actions to make sure that our flood system is, is updated to the most, the best information we have at the time about probable floods. If we don't take actions, obviously, you know, we won't be providing the level of protection that we think is appropriate, but in addition, there are regulatory impacts. One of them would be that those businesses and homes behind the levees would pay a higher flood insurance rate. Currently, our system is such that it wouldn't necessarily prohibit development, but it would have an economic cost of raising the flood insurance rates, which would be something that would be undesirable.
Jeb, one question. Would it be prudent for us to spend some time up at the legislature to look at from where the water comes? Obviously, we're responding to a need to protect ourselves from water, but it actually is coming from upstream. It seems that there's not a lot of work being done upstream to contain water where it falls, and would it not be worth our while to spend some time with the legislature, not only for the sake of Des Moines, but probably every larger city in the state of Iowa that has a significant effect on the GDP and where people live and where people work? One would think that, that the whole state ought to be concerned about that, not only in regard to the flood flow, but also to the increased runoffs and, and the degradation of our, of our land across the state in the future of agriculture. I think it's a, it's a huge deal. We're talking about raising bridges and levees, but in the meantime, it seems as though there's policies in place that accelerate the runoff rather than hold it back.
That's a good idea. Anytime we work with, with water resources, you know, you've got the specific and the local, and you also have the general and the global, and, and you really have to look at both of those. This particular study, obviously, was just kind of looking at the local effects and what we need to do, but obviously, we're impacted by everybody upstream, and people downstream are impacted by what we do. And in fact, we'll look a little bit at some of the things that are being done, that we were impacted by some DOT projects, and we need, that needs to be mitigated. So that's very good. And right now, we're also working with Pope County, it's not related to this study, but on the Four Mile Basin, and some of those, that study is also looking at a more watershed global, instead of just looking strictly at political jurisdictions, but looking more to watershed approach. That's a very appropriate.
Okay.
For today's discussion, we really want to look at the proposed improvements, kind of in three categories. There are the immediate actions that have been necessary on ongoing projects along the riverfront, and those have been brought to council in this last year, and things where we've been doing Coeur d'Alene Pump Station in Jackson Basin, where we've had to make adjustments, and the best estimate that we could on those impacts. We didn't have the study data, so we tried to make those improvements on the most conservative side, meaning we had to raise them as high as possible. As, now that we have this, the more detailed study, we're able to hone in more on what those improvements need to be done, but we have to move together, and a lot of these processes are in parallel, and it does make it difficult in the planning and budgeting standpoint, but we really don't have the luxury of doing things in the most sequential because then you'd have to delay everything, and until you get the results back, it would be a hardship, and we'd actually lose out on opportunities to make improvements as we go. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about Iowa DOT's project. As you're probably well aware, that when the DOT built the U.S. 65 bypass, there was some implications with flooding and the hydrology there, and the DOT's been working on that, and they do have a project in the works, and I'll talk about that. And the third category here is really the one that is impacting us in the CIP, and those are the additional improvements that we need to move forward that allow us to retain our FEMA accreditation and to maintain our current insurance rates and maintain those development opportunities that we currently have.
Question in the process, does FEMA need to validate the, the study that was done in the past with a further, more comprehensive study that is going to cost them quite a bit of money to, to get that done? And then how does that affect the actual FEMA accreditation? I mean, the numbers aren't validated by the more extensive study.
Correct. It's, it's, the U.S. Corps of Engineers and FEMA are two separate agencies, and they have different functions. The Corps has done the study that says, here's what we think the numbers are, and we went back with the STANTEC to try to validate that. FEMA has not done that at this point. They will in the future. It's better for us to take action in anticipation of what the FEMA is going to do instead of waiting until that time, because then there's such a long time to get the projects programmed and designed. But you're right, FEMA will have to take those results, they'll have to incorporate them into their flood insurance map revisions. In addition to that, I don't want to add too much complexity to it, but FEMA is also looking at how they actually evaluate and determine those flood risk areas. In fact, just in December, they released a draft proposal on how they want to change those rules. We have looked at that and had some conversations with FEMA regarding it, and it has to do with, with or without levee situations and accreditation. In the old system, if a levee was one inch short on the freeboard, then the mapping essentially assumes the levee did not exist, which, it does exist, it does provide a level of protection. Their new methodology will look at and say the levee does exist and does give credit for that. So those will have to happen in the future. There'll have to be a remapping. Currently, we're under the old maps, which use the old hydrology, and so those regulatory areas are accredited. But in the future, if, if we don't take actions, then we'll move from a, an accredited levee to a non-accredited levee, which will then be mapped differently and does affect our insurance rates.
Well, let's, are we responding to that, what you talked about earlier, that 2011 flow rate?
We are responding to what the Corps is, the 2011, not what currently FEMA has, but what the Corps has, which will be the future FEMA rate. We assume that, that FEMA will incorporate those numbers in their future study.
But, but the, the number that they are reporting for 2011 was an actual flow rate, is that correct?
What I showed there is, it's a, in 2011, the 100-year flow rate at Southeast Six, it's 107, 107,500 CFS, so that is the flow rate at that point now.
That was an actual?
Well, no, that's, that is the statistical prediction for the 100-year, but it's based upon historical. You take the historical data, it goes through a process, there's a 17B bulletin, and analyze it and say, what are we going, what will our predictions be for the 100-year flow rate at that, at that location?
So that's not an actual number? That's a prediction, that 107?
It is, it is a statistical prediction of a probable discharge.
And in 2002, that statistical number was 87?
It was 87,000 at Southeast Six.
Okay, so that's over a 20% increase.
Correct.
In, in that nine-year period.
From the analysis, correct.
Mayor, county members, the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. Mayor, county members of the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works, referring back to a slide that Jeb's already covered, just to make the point, Mayor, that the process of taking volumetric numbers like the ones you see here, twenty-nine thousand cubic feet per second, seventy-five, and then essentially doubling it based on the 2011 numbers to a hundred, roughly a hundred and eight thousand cubic feet per second, taking those volumetric measures and then translating them to base flood elevations, that is, to height, if you will. Pretty complicated process, but you certainly gather the implications here. What was seen as a 1% risk at a volume of roughly six thousand, or sixty thousand in seventy-five now is a hundred and eight thousand, so there's a huge view of the risk of a 1% flood essentially being an order of magnitude that you can see there before you. But the process of, what you're suggesting, the process of taking volumetric measures and translating them into freeboard or base flood elevation is pretty complicated. And although Jeb and I are up here to talk with you about the results of the study and what its implications are on the capital improvement program, we've got a number of people on our staff and a number of people from STANTEC, the consulting engineers, who've looked at the initial study by the Corps of Engineers, which was released about a year ago today, but only includes data up through 2008. It doesn't even include what we saw in 2010. So what we're seeing here really is an order of magnitude shift in a heightened risk to Des Moines from flooding, but taking that and translating it into base flood elevations, and then translating that into flood risk maps, really are a pretty complicated process. And I certainly don't want to miss the point that you're making, that the real issue here is a very significant one. There are things going on upstream from Des Moines that are impacting the height that we see in the Des Moines and Aracun rivers per equivalent precipitation over time. Something is happening to bring more water quicker to us, and certainly, that's impacted. And the volumetric numbers you hear, see here from the Corps, but then how we translate it into what the risk is based on the elevations in the city of Des Moines.
Well, and more importantly, I think for the future that I'm thinking about, is that, you know, what about nine years from now, are we going to see another 20% increase that's now over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand cubic feet per second? And then who's going to do those calculations to figure out what that freeboard is that we need to, you know, feel comfortable with at that hundred-year flow rate height? And, you know, are we making calculations that just kind of keeps us running in expenditures, you know, for today in not having a long enough site out forward into future years?
You highlight the problem with the, doing any predictive sciences, essentially, in seventy-five, when we, when they projected forward, obviously, they had no knowledge of what would happen in ninety-three or 2008, and as such, the numbers weren't as where we'd want them to have been. So we always take data that we see historically, analyze that with regional effects and rainfall, and what we think generally happens in the environment and projected in the future. But you are correct, weather patterns could continue to change and add additional water. They could change and remove water, too. It could go the other way, although it's, my experience usually, at least in this part of the country in the last couple decades, is it's much like cost estimates, they usually go up and not down. Doesn't mean they won't go down, but based upon the analysis procedure and the historical data that we have, this is the best estimate that we can make.
And also based upon the acceleration of the tiling that's going on upstream in the agricultural sector, knowing that about 85% of the water that comes down to us is rural ag.
So is it fair to assume, then, that based upon the gap, the nineteen seventy-five to 2002, and then you went 2002 to 2011, that realistically, we could be looking at 2015, 2016, when they might come in and reevaluate that?
For the FEMA?
For the FEMA.
Yeah, well, actually, we're in the reevaluation now, so the
No, I'm, you know, for the, where they've done the analysis of the discharges.
I think that's really the mayor's point as well.
Yeah.
I mean, the mayor's saying, if you look back at all these predictions, every one of them has taken a quantum leap every time they've done it. So, you know, the common sense person would look at that and say, the next time they do it, it's going to be even bigger.
Right, and it's going to be sooner.
Yeah, well, I would
But all of this, I think the bottom line is, we don't, we don't know what those future predictions are going to be, but we do know this. We do know that what we have today is not adequate in terms of flood protection systems. So we know we've got to do something to make it stronger. Whether we're going to do enough, I guess that remains to be seen. We don't know. The other thing I just wanted to add to the mayor's point about the tiling within the watershed of our rivers, and that is that with crop prices being so high, it's put more pressure on agricultural practices. So if you're a farmer and you've got land and you can get more crop in there by tiling, you're going to do it. So I, my own sort of armchair analysis is that some of that runoff coefficient that the mayor's concerned about, I think, has a real chance of increasing rather rapidly in the last several years and going forward, as there's more pressure on ag land to produce crops.
Jeb, if we're at the hundred and eight thousand CFS at Southeast Six where we had on the levee then, are we halfway up? Are we topping it? Where would we be?
I'll get a little bit to that a little further on, but you're right, as we convert those to elevations, so. Anyway, I'll jump a little bit into Councilman Moore's question here. This is just a review slide to show that we have already made significant investments in trying to modify ongoing projects to make sure that they're compatible and compliant with the numbers that we've received from the Corps of Engineers last year, and these have come through city council, these changes. This is sort of a little bit of the summary slide that shows the proposal improvements based upon the STANTEC study. As Bill Stowe mentioned, this study really had a couple of goals, and one of that was to take and take the model, or take the statistical analysis the Corps did, and try to validate that using their best estimate to say, is those reasonable numbers? Are those correct? It was also then to take those discharge numbers and look at the hydraulic models and our current hydraulic models, which was HECCRAZ, which is a 2D model through Des Moines, and input those discharges and look at the actual elevations. There were some issues down by US-65, where the hydraulic model that the Corps had previously used really wasn't appropriate, and they had to go to a 3D or 2D model, I guess, I'm sorry, the HECCRAZ is really a 1D model, and the other is a 2D model down at 65, to see that the discharges actually would produce elevations which mirrored the historical. And so when you come out of that, and then the final one is to look at alternatives to try to mitigate those increases in elevation, and this is a list of the projects, they looked at many different alternatives. This is sort of the summary of what seems to be the most cost-effective, because these alternatives have to be measured against their effectiveness and reducing the potential for flooding and also the cost of those alternatives. And listed here, the first one is having the DOT make some improvements on US-65, and I'll show a slide, a little more detail on that project. One of them is removing the old UP rail bridge just downstream of Scott Avenue, and also doing, modifying the Red Pedestrian Bridge, build a Des Moines Union Bridge, made quite a bit of constriction. Channel improvements just downstream of the UPR Bridge, once it's removed, and then also channel improvements upstream of the improvements that DOT would be making at US-65. And then, our original goal was to try to make all the improvements within channel. However, the study determined that was not sufficient, we would have to make some levy raises and wall raises in order to meet our freeboard. And that kind of takes me to my next slide, which is to Councilman Moore's question, is where does that come up on there? Well, essentially, these flood flows don't overtop the levees. The issue is that it encroaches into what's called freeboard. For the hundred-year, if you want to have an accredited levee, you need to have three additional feet above where you think the water is going to come, and that three additional feet is to help account for uncertainties in estimation and also sort of that factor of safety, you know, you don't want to cut things that close. And historically and regulatorily, it's been a three feet of freeboard, and if you start encroaching into that, then they won't accredit it. Well, we need to get that free, three feet of freeboard, and as we look at these different mitigation measures, you can kind of see we have the average water surface elevation at downtown, because that's where we're focusing these, we get quite a bit more improvement downstream. At the southeast Des Moines levee, we're good, once we make the improvements on US-65, we're going to be in much better shape there, but as we come up to downtown, we can see that when they make the improvements at US-65, the result is reducing the water surface elevation here at eighteen hundreds of foot. However, we're looking for three feet of freeboard, well, we only have 1.1 foot of freeboard after that improvement. So as we just kind of march down those alternatives, we get down to, after we've done all the channel improvements, we've been able to reduce the water surface 1.5, 6 feet. Our goal would have been able to reduce it so that we could have gotten it to three feet of freeboard, but you can see we're still a foot and a half short. That means there are certain places, that's not every place in the system, but at the minimum, which is what's critical. I mean, it doesn't do any good if you've got twenty-three and a half miles that are high enough and there's one piece that's not, so you have to look at those low areas. And so that indicated that we needed to go and bring forth alternatives to increase the heights of the levee, and that's the last option there. I'll just briefly look at some of these improvements. The DOT has programmed, and they're in the design phase, to put additional bridges on US-65. If you look at the slide, you can see the main river channel on the right-hand side, Des Moines River, and US-65 crosses that, but if you look carefully to the left there, you'll see kind of those little snakes out in the floodplain, and if you look, the DOT is proposing to build some bridges near where those snakes or those old channels were. And essentially, the flow characteristics in this area was, were that as the water gets higher up, it needs those old channels conveyance, and they were not built in the original project, they need to go back and make those modifications. And that's a seventeen point two million dollar project that the Iowa DOT is going to be building, and they should have that done by 2014. Now, we want to leverage the improvements they're making there, and the other one is for us to do some channel and ag levee changes upstream of this, so that we can get more flow on those offbanks and get even more water surface reduction upstream of that to southeast Des Moines at the wastewater treatment plant, and it goes, the effects go all the way up into downtown.
Jeb, did I hear you say the modification of 65 is proposed to be completed by 2014 or started?
Correct, completed.
Completed? I think that's going to help a lot.
And the DOT, that's a big chunk of change, and they're committed to do that, and we want to make sure that gets done. Talked about the abandoned UPR Bridge just downstream of Scott. Here, this slide, in 2008, you can, you can just visually see the hydraulic obstruction there. The bridge is so low that when the water gets high, it's actually on the low cord, which creates quite a bit of constriction in the channel, and it doesn't let the water flow through freely, and it hangs up debris, and the proposal is to have this bridge removed, and we need to start negotiations with the Union Pacific. In fact, they are coming in this month to meet with the city manager on those discussions to have this bridge removed. It'll cost them about a million dollars to remove that bridge, and then, in order to, again, leverage that, remove the bridge, proposals for the city to do additional downstream channel improvements to increase the flow through this section, which would be about another two to three million dollars of city costs. This one, the DM Union Railroad Bridge, which we all know as the Red Bridge now, you can see here that it's also in high-flow conditions, the low cord does constrict the flow, and it's a bridge, if we want to increase the conveyance to the river, we need to modify this bridge. The proposal that the consultants looked at was to raise the bridge four feet. That will have significant impacts to the trail approaches and the riverwalk improvements, and as Alan McKinley mentioned earlier, those, some of those costs are programmed into the other parts of CIP, but to raise this bridge will be quite a bit of money. Our proposal is to do an initial feasibility study on structurally can we raise that bridge, and then make the decision from there what to do with the bridge, but it does need to be modified because it's a significant constriction to the flow.
Can I ask a question? Do you think that that bridge is more restrictive, say, for instance, than the Grand Avenue Bridge?
At the elevations we're talking about, the Grand Avenue Bridge, it's not only the constrictions, but also its impact. For the Grand Avenue Bridge, it does have quite a bit, when you get those higher flows on the arches, it wouldn't be a bridge that we would build today. If you look at the Southeast Connector Bridge, it's quite a bit higher, the low cord is above what we thought at the time was a 500-year flood, and the piers, it doesn't come down in that arc. That was one of the things that in that design, people said, well, we want the arch-type bridge because it looks neat. Well, we can't do it because of flood. The Grand does provide restrictions. The issue is it's further up towards the dam, and we've already had, made levee improvements along the skating park, and so those improvements migrate upstream, where this bridge has more impact because it, the improvements help the levee section from there upstream. So obviously, if we remove Grand and rebuilt it, it would be a benefit. However, the cost to do that and how much you get isn't really worth it. Where this one, for a couple million dollars to raise it, you get a huge improvement. So it's sort of a cost-benefit ratio. But if we had to do it all over again, we would not build these kind of bridges as low as they are. Of course, a hundred years ago, I think they did a pretty good job for what they knew at the time. This is an overview, it shows improvements, it's a little hard to read, but I just wanted to show this one to show that there are the necessity of doing spot raises along the levees, and those, even though we have about four and a half million dollars in there to do these spot raises, as we go through the permitting process, there is a huge hurdle to cross with the Corps of Engineers. Those estimates really assume that they can be done as simply doing a small raise on the levee, a foot, foot and a half, without a complete rebuild of the levee, but we'll have to work that through the Corps of Engineers, and it's possible in their regulatory review that they may want the levees to be completely reconstructed, and then that four and a half million balloons into a huge number, in which case, we have to have federal support to do any large-scale improvements, and that four and a half million, instead of raising the levee, will simply be a placeholder for our match for the federal process. So we, even though we're moving ahead with projects that we want to accomplish, so that we can accomplish them quicker, we still need federal involvement. Like the mayor mentioned, this is a global thing. There's things that possibly the Corps could do on the regulation of Salerville or improvements of Salerville that would help us. Those are outside of our jurisdiction, we can't do those, and if we have, if we're unable to make the small minor improvements and have to go ahead and rebuild the levees, that's going to be a project that we need federal investment because it's going to be such a large project. And so we don't want to just walk away from the federal process, we want to continue to try to do what we can to get federal involvement for these improvements.
So I'm just trying to read your legend down there, so the green, that greenish color, we have to raise at least a foot?
Less than a foot.
Less than a foot, okay.
So it's basically less than a foot or more than a foot.
Okay.
That's kind of the break. Obviously, a raise of less than a foot is rather easy in terms, once you get above a foot, then it's a little harder, and you have to do a little more to do that. So they're really fairly minor raises, but, and we would have hoped not to have to do those, but, you know, if you have to make a six-inch raise to make, to comply with the regulatory, you have to do it.
So what's the timeline, looking at what you've got on this chart?
Well, that kind of goes to the next slide, and we have a summary slide of our initial, what we want to do initially here for our projects, and we want to start, obviously, we've already started with the ongoing projects.
Mayor, county members of the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. Christine, the real issue is that part of the CIP that you have received today will have plans for these pieces of the puzzle, and certainly, when we get to the point of talking to you, I believe on the 23rd, about the stormwater rates and the stormwater CIP, we'll be discussing further that schedule, but essentially, it's within the six-year CIP that you will be approving, the two years in particular, under your legislative authority, being the operative ones. A couple points to make, and really, let me start by saying, clearly, we have the benefit of working with the city engineer's staff, not only Jeb. Jeb and I have the luxury of being able to stand up here and talk with you about it, but behind us are a number of folks who really scrubbed through the detail of this initial report from our consulting engineers, Pam Cooksey, Darwin Larson, who's not here, and from the Public Works staff, we've got Dave Miller, Dan Pritchard, Chad Christensen. Dave Miller, Dan Pritchard, Chad Christensen. A lot of detail, a lot of complexity, and it's easy, I commend you for listening to us, because it's easy to get sidetracked by issues of FEMA implications, when what we're really talking about today, in front of you, essentially, is the core study, which came out about a year ago. And the core, for whatever reason, will essentially have studies on volumetric rates coming to us. We don't know what their triggers are, but certainly 2008 was their trigger. And it essentially indicates a far greater risk for Des Moines than what we had assumed before. And when I say before, I think primarily Jeb talked about the regulated nature of the Des Moines River. Sailerville really was in its design and almost constructibility phase of the year I was born. And for all of us, as we sat around here today, and then reflect on what climate change meant 50 years ago, it meant put on another pair of gloves, or a t-shirt. I mean, there's been significant changes in how the world works, and what the interplay is between practices upstream, climate, and what it means to Des Moines. We're a river city. We can look down here and see the confluence. What we're talking about is the risk from precipitation that has significantly changed, and the amount, not only from precipitation, but the quickness in which it comes to Des Moines. Specifically, the summary slide here goes into some of the points that Jeb covered, such as the removal of the Union Pacific Bridge. And I know Mayor County spent a great deal of time with us in 2008 and 2010 in flood fighting. I'm pretty confident that bridge has received more profanity from my staff than any other thing in the city of Des Moines. It is a significant constraint on flow through the city of Des Moines. And I invite anybody to take the southeast Connector Bridge, particularly going westward, across the Des Moines River down here, look upstream, and instead of seeing, you know, a beautiful vista of the Des Moines River, you see nothing, in my view, but a series of constraints. Bridges, Red Bridges is one. If you look the other way, you'll see the Union Pacific Bridge, which is a significant constraint. Mayor, you'd asked essentially, you know, how do you trade off the constraints? And the city engineer's response, essentially, based on the report that we've received, is our consulting engineer really looks on a dollar-for-dollar basis, how much additional flow do we get by removal of constraints? And the UP Bridge is a very significant one, on a dollar-per-dollar basis, the most important one for us to get our hands around. And obviously, those of us who've worked around that bridge also know that it has dangers to the public. If you try to walk across that bridge, which many people do, it is very dangerous, particularly at high or very low levels of the Des Moines River, like what we're seeing today. So, we would start negotiations, as this city engineer mentioned, with the UP immediately on the removal of that bridge. We'd also have some discussion about the so-called Red Bridge down here. Very important, in our view, in getting our hands around the level of risk, and reducing the risk to improve flow-through. I know in going out and talking with people, community meetings in particular, there's often kind of a sense that, I don't live on the river, I don't live downtown, what do I care about flood risk? I live in Highland Park, or in southwestern hills, or wherever it may be. You know, the reality is, I use the analogy of a hand, the palm of my hand, if the health of the palm of my hand isn't good, it won't be long before the fingers themselves begin to suffer consequences. Those of you who looked at Missouri River flooding, and the Mississippi River flooding, know it's not just the Missouri and Mississippi that were the issues this last year, it was the tributaries to those. So when we have problems with the Des Moines Raccoon, we're the kind of problems, as an example, Bob, you saw the Eastern Basin, where we can't move water to the rivers, and it backs up into our neighborhoods. So this is a lot bigger than simply riverine issues here, associated with those of us who work and have critical facilities immediately adjacent to the river. I don't want to downplay that. A lot of tax base here, the Water Works is an example, the wastewater treatment facility, some critical facilities, but all the neighborhoods, essentially, are tied to a system that moves water to the Des Moines Raccoon River. And if there are problems with those rivers, there's problems in the neighborhoods that go far beyond those of us who immediately are adjacent to the rivers. We need to look at the Red Bridge, and although Jeb didn't mention it, there's certainly going to be an issue as to whether that bridge is removed, or whether it's raised some four feet. The economics of that are going to be a significant issue. We need to get greater detail on that, but our quick view of it is, it would cost roughly $1 million to remove it, and three and a half, or less, to modify it. So certainly, the economics of that will come into play. We also need to, we talk about DM3, but that's as you look downriver, that's essentially the south bank of the Des Moines River, past the confluence in particular. There are a number of things that need to go on there, in terms of channel improvements. They have trail implications. You have a trail item tonight on the council agenda. Certainly, we're in a position where we support the Parks Initiative to move forward with that trail work, but this has implications on our ability to alter the levy, and may involve removing a portion of that trail, and actually increasing the elevations over time. But there's never that precise alignment and timing between what FEMA says, what the Corps of Engineers does, and where grant money's received. So certainly, there's that opportunity for start and stops. Jeb has put in here about 408 required work, and I really would be remiss, I've talked about a number of people on the Public Works staff, and the engineering staff, our legal staff, very important to us, Kurt Ruckel from Budget and Finance, our friends in CD, a lot of importance in how floodplain management works. We're often forced to work with 19th-century law, this 408, and 404, and 403, Go to the Rivers and Harbors Act, which is a piece of legislation that's, I believe, 1899. So interpreting all that, working with the federal government in particular, is a real challenge. But there will be implications in how we do a number of the modifications down here with permitting through the federal government. And we'll certainly need the support and help that we've historically received from our congressional delegation in working through that permit process. It is very complex. We're also looking here, obviously, at starting the design and permitting for the city mitigation near US 65, on the far southeast side of the city. There are a number of channel improvements, working with a number of other stakeholders in that area, to improve the ability to move water more quickly through the city, and not reducing our freeboard, or not allowing the water to move up on the levy itself. And again, funding, besides the permitting process, funding very important for us to work closely with. Historically, it's been both state and federal, but one would think that the federal government is probably the more likely source of funding in the future in dealing with issues associated with our levy and flood protection system. And essentially, what we are describing to you, based on the report from our consulting engineer, Stan Tech out of St. Louis, is about $20 million in improvements, based on the study we received a year ago. And I know Jeb and I, and Phil Dellafield certainly could come back to you and speak more specifically on the FEMA implications of this. FEMA really going to the insurability issues, but today, what we're really describing primarily is the risk, based on the Corps of Engineers' description, about flood protection, based on the 2008 event, and data from 2001 forward, that really indicate a far greater risk in Des Moines than what we saw before that time. Be happy to try, between Jeb and I, we'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Bill, a couple questions, or maybe this is for the city manager. Does the city have condemnation, eminent domain powers over bridges?
And probably a question more likely for the Corporation Council, Mr. Lester. But the, at the end of the day, from my very simplified view of the world, Christine, the ability to implicate a federal carrier, like a railroad, is extremely complicated. And the long and short of it is, we want to be able to work with them, so that they voluntarily remove it, as opposed to going through a protracted process of attempting to either condemn, or view it as a nuisance. We believe that the Union Pacific is also very interested in removing that. It is, in my terms, and not necessarily one that the Corporation Council would agree with, it's an attractive nuisance. I see people out there constantly fishing off of it, recreating on it. I'm a big guy, and walk across it, and my stride can barely make it from time to time, from tie to tie. So in my view, it's very dangerous. I think the UP understands that, and in my view, the process of legal condemnation would be very complicated, and one that frankly would delay us significantly. So we want to try and negotiate its removal.
Well, and I appreciate that, but just having worked with them, they're not the easiest people in the world to work with.
Generally speaking, we have the ability to condemn for public improvements, like streets and sewers. The difficulty is with the railroad. The railroads occupy a very special place in law within this country. And my experience is that it's very, very difficult to go through condemnation on a railroad property. So everything that Bill and Jeb have said about trying to reach an amicable solution with the railroad is right on, and that's where we are. And it's extremely critical that we get to that point with them, because if we have to resort to legal action, I'm not optimistic about our chances of prevailing within my lifetime, at any rate.
Okay.
Along those lines, if I may, Christine, I do want to mention something that I think is very important here, and be easy to overlook. I know a number of you have been involved in this, but the city manager really has led the charge here, and talking with the DOT, they're looking at a $17 million investment to remove some of the constrictions that they have on what we term as the US 65 bypass. But that was done through negotiations, and without legal process, if you will, and really was because of the city manager and city engineer's leadership, and talking with a number of people in Ames, to voluntarily come to that agreement. That will provide significant relief to us, not enough relief to get us within an accreditation standard of three feet of freeboard, but nonetheless, a significant help, and I certainly want to emphasize that.
So then, with this plan that's being proposed, all the recommendations here, the fact that we have a plan in place, and that we would be moving forward with it, how will that impact flood insurance for the people that are impacted?
Excellent question. Two similar, but not aligned, issues. We're talking about US Army Corps of Engineers' data on flood risk, and that primarily is what's being addressed here. The issue of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's view of base flood elevations and flood risk isn't necessarily aligned with that, but certainly, these improvements will move us, in our view, closer to what we anticipate will be a mapping situation that allows federal flood insurance for those entities that will be at risk within the floodplains in Des Moines. But as Jeb mentioned, there's some discussion about how FEMA will approach it. FEMA and the Corps don't necessarily talk in lockstep. The long and short of it, Chris, is there are areas where flood, I'm sorry, where the levees are not accredited, that for years, the Corps has treated as if the levees don't exist. You and I can see them, you and I can look at a satellite photograph, and there's now a realistic view that there needs to be some factor of protection allowed in their process for that. We're not exactly sure what that means, but at the end of the day, we believe these recommendations will move us very close to a FEMA realization on where the risks are, and what can be insured.
Bill, can I just add to that, because there's a very critical point in here, and that is, I'm going to use sort of the shorthand version, the FEMA impacts on flood insurance, the remapping, if you will. My recollection is, we're probably three or four years away from that happening.
Correct.
So that three or four years before that impact hits us, really provides you the window within which we really want to make some progress on these improvements. And I think that's one of the, one of the reasons that we're here advocating so strongly about proceeding with the improvements. We'd like to make that progress, so those really adverse impacts that might derive out of a remapping that FEMA would do, hopefully, we can head it off at the pass, if we get going with these improvements. So it's, the implication for me is, it adds a huge sense of urgency about proceeding with the work.
But I don't want to warrant to you, Chris, that the $20 million improvements here will necessarily indicate that the FEMA view of risk are entirely addressed. We just are not in a position to be able to make that kind of warrant. I certainly can tell you that, in our view, this is a necessary, ongoing process. Jeb threw up a slide that essentially said, we've made $3 million in additional improvements. That's in the last year to ongoing projects. Underneath those ongoing projects, we're probably $30 million, or actually, closer to $50 million in investment, now that I think about it. The point is, this is a, really, we're, and it goes back to the mayor's point, we're chasing a differing view of realized risk. The risks are increasing, and we never reach this static point where all risks are addressed, and everything is closed down. I can't warrant otherwise to you.
Bill, on the speeding up of the flow, the water, and that going on to, is the Red Rock has the capacity to take up the additional flow, or is that going to be a buffer to hold the water back? So whatever we do here is still going to be eliminating us from really getting rid of this as fast as we can?
Great question, Mr. Mahaffey. You're basically pointing, Bob, to the backwater effect from downstream protection, if you will. The reality is that we continue to advocate, through the mayor and city manager, for a more principled look at how there's coordination between Red Rock and Sailerville in particular. This has implications on that. Certainly, what we're viewing this is very much in isolation. There has been some analysis in the Stan Tech study about the backwater effect. These numbers have some allocation of that impact. But reality is, in our view, we believe that a greater coordination between Red Rock and Sailerville will further and additionally improve that, but these assume that there will be a backwater effect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody have anything else?
Could I just add one, one comment about this discussion, and that is, in an earlier time, in a project like this, we might have been before you advocating that we pursue aggressively federal earmarks through our congressional delegation to help allocate funding for the Corps of Engineers to pay for some of this work. Despite what I would characterize as a Herculean effort on the part of the mayor, myself and others, to get the attention of our friends in the federal government to do just that, we've not been successful to date. We continue to work on it, both in terms of trying to get federal dollars allocated to do some of the detailed engineering work that the mayor's talked about, in terms of the global look at it. We've also tried to advocate for construction dollars that would be allocated for this project. It simply has not been successful, and I can't tell you right now that there's, I have any particular hope that that will happen. Nonetheless, we'll continue to pursue that. And to the extent we can get any federal assistance, that $20 million hopefully can be reduced, and we'll continue to do that. But there's just not been much positive coming from our work over the last 12 months to get federal assistance to help with some of these really urgently needed flood improvements. So, just a bit of additional information, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Seeing no other comments by council, we'll ask if there's any public input or public comment. Anybody in the audience have any issues, thoughts, need for clarification? Seeing none, let's call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.